Now, I'd like to call it to order. Study session for the May City Council for Thursday, May 30th, 2013. The first item on the agenda is to review the agenda for next Monday's city council meeting. Page two, items two through four A. Items four B through five A. Items five B and five C. Items five D and five E. Items five F through five H. Items six A through seven B. Items seven C through seven J. Mr. Wesley?
Mayor, if I may, I've put on your place this morning a letter from Fred Beesman, representing the property owners adjacent to this zoning case, C-1321. They're asking for this to be pulled from the agenda, not introduced at this time, so they can continue to work with the applicants for possible changes to the site. The applicant has expressed that they are pretty well satisfied with their plan. It comes to you with a recommendation for approval from the P&amp;Z board. They don't see any benefit from this continuance. They just soon go ahead with the hearing process.
This is in District Six.
Yep.
Mr. Summers.
John, why don't you give just a little bit of background on this parcel? Because it was a -- most of it has already been zoned for condos. Condo construction was under -- condos were under construction prior to the economy tanking. And so what has changed between that zoning and now?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Summers, the 10 acres of this was previously approved for the RM3 PAD development. The north 10 acres of the site was for an apartment complex of about 16 or 17 units per acre. The economy got that. It stopped after some basic infrastructure was put in. They've now added a five-acre ag zone piece along the south side to the overall project, thus the rezoning again to the RM3 for the total project. The densities are staying about the same. This time, it's a slightly redesigned condominium project. The major concern that we hear from the adjacent property owner or some of the setback, that modification of the setbacks along the property edge, they feel like they're being encroached upon a little bit more than is comfortable for them. And staff and the P&amp;Z board have been comfortable with it because of the limited nature of those encroachments, the way the buildings are set back from the property, from that area, and the overall size of the structures, not as much as they could be in their standard zone.
So it maintains the density it had originally, but spread out on more acreage. Did you reduce the height?
It's the same density over a large area, so it's as many units.
Many units.
Or a few more because of the larger area. Yes, the standard zoning would allow taller buildings up to 40 feet. They're going about 30 feet on these buildings. So that's where that kind of overall amassing of the buildings is less than it could be.
If we move forward with the introduction today, does that stop the parties from getting together and maybe adding a stipulation here in the next two weeks?
The implication for the applicant is if they do get together and come up with something that can agree to, to change, then two weeks from now, we're back with an introduction of the modification, which is basically the same two-week type of continuance. If there is no change, then they're ready to hear it two weeks from now. So it keeps it moving if we don't do the continuance at this point.
Okay.
But they could still be talking.
And I know that we have the attorney for the project here. Do we have the attorney for the protestors here also? Okay. Do they want to make any statements? Otherwise, leave it on the agenda.
That's your suggestion?
Yeah.
Let me ask you this. I guess that's not -- I won't ask you that. Don't worry about that. So basically, what's going to be accomplished? What do we hope to accomplish if we continue this?
The desire on the person submitting the letter is that they could get with the applicants over the next two weeks and try to resolve some of the differences they have, and then come back with revised ordinance to introduce that would be consistent with.
Okay. And once again, what's to stop them from doing that now?
Nothing. They could do the same thing.
So I guess if we didn't -- if we did continue it, there would be the pressure to get together and talk. If we didn't continue it, there's still the pressure to get together and talk, because we can always pull it. We could continue it two weeks from now.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, my suggestion, we just go ahead and move it forward with the caveat that if one party doesn't talk to the other, we can always change that in two weeks.
Okay. Is there any disagreement, Councilmember Summers, on that? All right. The applicants and everyone, did we sort of understand where we're coming from? So I guess what we'd be looking for, Councilmember Summers, it's okay if I finish that thought. What we'd be looking for from the applicants is a report back through Mr. Wesley on the talks and any progress or lack of progress that you make. And you would give us a report in the study session or agenda review a couple of weeks from now, and we'll then revisit this, see if we'll move on or make changes or continue. Okay? Is that all right? Okay. All right. Items seven K through nine B. And items 10A through 12A. Next item is to hear presentation discussed and provide direction on the fiscal year 1314 capital improvement program.
This morning, what we'd like to do is give you an overview. Oops, I'm sorry. That is not the right slide. Somehow, we have a PDF instead of a PowerPoint, so we will just go through it. So we should go through the same. We'd like to give you an update on the capital improvement program that is included in the fiscal year 1314 tentative budget. The last election that we had for the bond program, we do want to remind you, we had in November 2008, we did a streets and a public safety bond election that was successful. In November 2010, we had a utility for all of the utilities, the natural gas, the water, the wastewater, and the electric, that was also successful. In November of 2012, we had a parks bond election that was also successful. Those items are included in our list of funded projects. So what we have here for you is a listing of the items that are currently authorized that would include authorized bonds as well as cash projects. Those would include our own local funding as well as grant projects, that type of a thing. This is the total that we have outlined at this time that are current and funded. This would be, if you look in the fiscal year 1314, you'll see the total is about $310 million. You will find that dollar amount is included in the tentative budget for fiscal year 1314. The other item that we don't have listed here is we do have a placeholder for possible, if you do decide to go forward with the 2013 bond election, we have a placeholder in the tentative budget, just as a placeholder until that is finalized. So you'll see actually about $335 million in the tentative budget when we come forward with that. But 310 of that is funded projects of authorization that we already have. And that's really all we have for the capital improvement. We have attached to your item in Legistar is the actual detailed project list of all the projects behind these numbers. The projects that you have are not new. They're the same ones that we gave you the list back in April, where we gave you the detailed list of all the various CIP projects. So those haven't changed. But we did include them again here for you, so you can see exactly which projects are currently funded in our capital improvement program. Are there any questions or anything that you'd like me to go over regarding this?
Any questions?
Can we do a line by line?
Sure. Any questions?
We've already done a line by line.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. There's no questions or comments or changes? Move ahead. Okay, the next item is to hear presentation discussed, provide direction on the fiscal year 1314 tentative budget.
Okay. Last week, we did come to you regarding the tentative budget or the proposed budget for the city manager, and you asked us to come back to receive some feedback and have some discussion of some various components in there. We'd also like to bring up just kind of what the tentative budget is, because we are coming on the June 3rd agenda that we just reviewed. You do have a line item for adoption of the tentative budget. The tentative budget sets the maximum that we are able to adopt for the fiscal year 1314. It is not the final, but it is the maximum. The final can either be equal to or less than the tentative that you'll be setting on June 3rd, on Monday. Just a reminder that we're currently under home rule option. What that does is it allows us to set our budget based on our resources available to the city of Mesa. It excludes us from the state of Arizona exponential limitation rule, which would set ours at a limitation based on a formula based on population and inflation. Because we're under the home rule option that the Mesa voters approved in 2010, it does continue through fiscal year 1415.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, Councilmember Higgins.
Could you explain that home rule in a different way? Because I've heard it explained easier maybe for those playing at home.
Sure.
Because what you're saying is, oh, I'm sorry, the state would make our budget for us, basically.
That is correct.
We didn't -- okay.
That is correct, Councilwoman Higgins. What the state statute requires is that it actually goes back to the 1979-80 budget, the one that we, the city adopted back then. It then applies a formula based on population growth and inflation since that time, and will set our expenditure limitation at that level. There are two options that cities can do in order to, an option to opt out of the expenditure limitation rule. One of those is called a home rule option, and that's what the city of Mesa currently has in place. It requires that we go out to the citizens of Mesa, and they have to approve it. It's for a four-year timeframe, so it automatically sunsets every four years. And what it does is it allows us to set our expenditure limit equal to our resources, but does not give us a cap or a dollar amount that we have to fall underneath. The thing that this allows us to work on is back in 1979 and 80, we did not have the quality of life sales tax. We did not have the local street sales tax. And those types of things would not be taken into account with the formula from the state. So the home rule option allows us to budget for those expenditures based on those resources and set our limits based on what we can afford in the city of Mesa and where our priorities are.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So in other words, and that was a great explanation, by the way, thank you. We get to decide as long as to balance budget?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Okay?
Included in the fiscal year 1314 tentative budget is also, the Mesa voters also approved the parks bonding that we talked about in 2012. So we have included a secondary property tax levy that would repay the debt associated with those particular projects. Also included is the increase in the enterprise fund transfer to the general fund. This is a transfer that we rely on as one of the main revenue sources to the general fund. It has not been adjusted in over five years. So the fiscal year 1314 budget also includes that adjustment as well, adjusting it up to $90 million. Also included in the tentative budget are utility rate modifications to water, wastewater, and the residential portion of the solid waste rates. The modifications that are included in the 1314 fiscal year are actually lower than those that we anticipated a couple of years ago, when we did some forecasting on where we expected the rates to be in the upcoming years. We have two different issues that we're still in discussions on that we were asked to come back to meet with you on. One is, over the next four years, the city is scheduled to cover about $40.8 million in existing debt service with our sales tax. There was a recommendation to shift a portion of that debt service over to the secondary property tax to allow for a more stable revenue source, excuse me. And that would decrease our debt service funded by sales tax to about $32 million over the next four years instead of the 40.8. This would create additional capacity in our sales tax resources. That would also allow us to make sure that we can fund the operations and maintenance that's associated with those parks projects that were approved by the voters in fall of 2012. Another area of discussion revolves around our enterprise fund transfer. And another option to increase the stability of the general fund revenues is also to adjust the enterprise fund transfer to $92.2 million instead of the $90 million that's currently included in the fiscal year 1314 budget. In order to do that, one option would be to raise, to adjust the rates 3% in 1314 as opposed to the 2% currently included in the budget. That would allow us to maintain our targeted reserve level over the forecast period. If you recall, we still have a targeted level that keeps us above 8% of, indeed, fund balance of our reserves in order, over the forecast period. So you don't look at just one year, but we look at multiple years when we're trying to look at these fund balance management and reserve management. And as an update for the calendar, the calendar we have on June 3rd, like we discussed, you have your approval of the tentative budget. That's going to set the maximum that we can adopt for 1314. We'll also have the introduction of the utility rate ordinances at that time. June 6th, we're scheduled to come back at this time, unless you request an earlier review of that, of the five-year capital improvement program. So again, this morning, we just talked about the funded items, but what we haven't addressed are the additional identified projects from the departments and how we may fund those in the future over the next five to eight years. June 17th is when we're going to do the adoption of the five-year CIP as well as adoption of the final annual budget, and the adoption of the utility rate ordinances happen on that day as well. The last action we take that's related to the tentative budget or to the budget process is on July 1st, we do the adoption of the secondary property tax levy that is included in the fiscal year 1314 budget.
So Mayor and Council, we've provided you kind of an overview of where we are headed with the tentative budget. One item that I think I failed to mention to councilmembers in some of our briefings, and we talked about it during the presentation, but I just want to make sure it's clear. There was a discussion, if you recall, during the arts and cultural presentation about a $100,000, I don't know if we call it match challenge. We have not included a $100,000 match in our proposed budget, so I just want to make sure that was clear, understand that. If you recall, there's an individual who's offered up $100,000 that the city would match $100,000. And so I just put that out there, and I apologize, we didn't, it came up during the discussion of the department presentation, but we haven't really followed up on that. That was not included in the items that I listed for you all. So we'd like to, you know, seek Mayor and Council's direction today. We've, you know, the dollar amounts for the tentative budget really don't change for next week, so that's going to continue. It's really just the approach as it relates to shifting the sales tax debt to the secondary property tax debt or using, increasing the utility rates by only a percent to increase the enterprise transfer by $2.2 million. I think it's trying to keep it simple here as far as the different options that are available, so.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Higgins.
If, all right, so we keep an 8% fund balance for the general fund. We keep that same 8% for the utility funds, too?
That is correct, Councilwoman Higgins. We, in the schedule, I think we showed you, over the forecast period, we maintain the fund balance, the reserves in enterprise above the 8% also.
So is there play in there just to reduce to the 8%?
I think if we looked out at the schedule, over the four years, we get pretty close to 8%.
We, correct. For the enterprise fund, I believe it's in about the third year, we get down to about 8.25%.
Yeah, we're down, all the way down to 8.25%. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Year 1516.
So the way you look at it is not so much as a snapshot on the reserves, you look at it as part of the five-year plan, how it flows and how the impact of one year's actions will affect the subsequent years, and you've tried to take a, basically a five-year rolling budget when you're looking at the reserves.
That's correct, Mayor, because there's, we recognize there are times when we have planned drawdowns of the reserves, but we don't want to go too far below, we don't want to go below the 8%.
Yeah, I mean, and that's how all that plays within the five years. We could actually increase things by 4%, reduce them by 2%, and you'd have to make up the difference next year or the next year.
Right.
And what you, what staff has tried to do is try to even those out or plan those so that we may be at 9% this year, but we're going to get to 8.25% in two years, and it may, it's going to hover around that 8% at some point during the five years.
Right. Well, and after that year, it actually maintains itself at about 8.4% for the next two years. So it kind of gets down to that point and continues.
All right. Okay. Councilman Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't able to be here last week for this discussion, but I just do want to indicate that I'm in support of the overall budget amount. And my preference is the option that is using that portion of the, shifting the debt service and secondary property tax. Those of you who know me, know for many years, I've advocated that we have a secondary property tax to cover all of our existing 2008 debt, and we've been on a very solid progression since 2008 with recognizing how that works to function, to serve the city finances. And I think that we've managed that, those dollars, well. And I think this approach is a more fiscally conservative approach to use the secondary property tax for a portion of that $2.2 million. Any additional secondary tax that owners would pay, obviously, could be deducted on their taxes as opposed to utility increases. So I prefer to keep the utility increases at the lower amount and then use the 2.2. But I concur overall in the budget presentation.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would be an advocate of going the route of the utility increases. And you know, what's being missed here is the great win that actually occurred. The reason we had, I had staff kind of research what we had originally projected for increases in the utility rates, and maybe you can recount those for us, but they were significant for last year and this year, if you looked at the culmination of all of those together versus what we're suggesting now. And the great win here is because of restructuring our finance, taking advantage of those low interest rates. We're able to, last year, 0%. And by the way, there wasn't one brass band or parade for us to, in fact, not one person from District Two said, hey, thanks a lot for making sure those utility rates were zero.
We're in a box of news next week.
Yeah, somebody needs to do something, because it was totally lost last year. And so I think, you know, instead of trying to take it from a negative side, I think we really ought to look at the positives of saying, you know what, a reasonable rate may be that 3%, but it was, if I heard the total correct, we were looking at 6.8% for water.
You have the slide.
Okay, you have that slide.
Would you pull it up?
I have.
Oh.
I have it up.
Yeah. And so I think, hopefully, as I go back and communicate to folks and say, hey, this is what I would be an advocate for, is look at what it was going to be, look at the great actions by this council and the professional staff, and look at where we're talking now. And I think people would appreciate that approach. What I'm worried about is by going a different route, looking at increasing the property tax, and you know, I have the most admiration for Mr. Kavanaugh. Thank you. I was glad, he knows I know his name, but.
You can tell him.
That's too good. Yeah, I think the world.
That's all right. I'm with you today. I've already messed up this morning. By the way, I apologize for messing that up.
No, 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 you're fine. For Dennis is, you know, I think folks, what will be lost in this great win and this great restructuring and a great way to manage utility rates is people will see only that, hey, you're increasing my property tax. And so I think the greater win is by going this different route and then save this opportunity. Now, I had this whole speech of, you know, this debt that we're talking about, this is $100 million of debt that was executed between 2002 and 2007. And we're talking about this debt service that we do. And if you look at the end result without running through it all, this last fiscal budget, we paid over $19 million to service that debt. Thanks to all this great work that's going on, that's been knocked down to $10. So we are actually doing the smart thing and addressing that old debt and doing it wisely, and that's going to be smoothed out to 2026. So another win. You know, just trying to get the, I'd hate to see all of these positive things that are occurring somehow get lost in this, you know, thought of raising property taxes. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Councilman Richens?
I think I've really been struggling with the increase in the utility rates at all from 83.6. I really think we're going to have a lot of pressure on commodity prices going forward. I really, really am struggling. I mean, if it was up to me, I'd find another $6 million cut out of the budget completely, you know, to accommodate for that. But, you know, having to look at some of the fiscal realities, I have a question, though, because something that you said there struck me. Chris, in last year's budget, did we, did we do the property tax adjustment last year to pay for firefighters and the new fire stations? Didn't we do that same approach?
We did that, it was not, it wasn't last year. It was 2000.
Quite a few years. It was when we originally instituted the secondary property tax.
Yeah, so, well, we did it twice. We did it initially in 2008, then I think we did it again in 2010. As those fire stations came online and we were approving the secondary property tax for the debt, we also then increased a portion for the operations for those projects that were being funded by the.
About how much was that?
Million and a half, I think, million and six, million and a half.
Okay, so we've done this property tax adjustment thing before. It's not something that is.
Right. I have the floor, thank you. So I just wanted to confirm that, because I know it's an approach that we've taken before. And, you know, it, when I look at how we've done that for public safety and appropriately so, you know, to not do that, I have a lot of concerns about, you know, we passed this $70 million parks bond, and it's going to take quite a bit of money to maintain those facilities appropriately. As I've talked to my district residents, they're all about quality of life. They want a great quality of life in Mesa. And a lot of them are willing to pay the price of a, you know, big gulp, is I think what we're talking about here, to maintain their parks appropriately. Again, I, you know, on the utility rate side, I have a lot of concern about raising those utility rates, particularly because of the CAP canal issue that's coming up for water, increased water costs, gas prices, natural gas is starting to rise. Production is down because of competition. Now, there's a lot of exporting that's wanting to go on. So I don't think any of these costs for commodities are going to get any cheaper, and I think we need more of a hedge in our utility accounts to make sure that we operate those appropriately. So, you know, I'm with Councilmember Kavanaugh that I think I would shift more into a secondary property tax than I would putting it on the burden of our utilities.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I may be asked for a point of clarification. Operation and maintenance is not debt service. Those are two very different things.
What we did, I believe, Councilmember Fincher, was take a portion of that secondary property tax payment to pay for the.
Staffing.
No, to pay for debt, the existing bond debt, so we could free up sales tax to pay for the fire stations. Is that correct?
Correct.
You say pay for the fire stations.
To pay for the staffing.
Which is operation.
Which is operation.
We just shifted.
Exactly what's being described here, we did for the operations.
Right, we shifted debt, sales tax debt service out of the general fund, sales tax debt service. We, by shifting that over to the secondary property tax and paying for it that way, then that created additional capacity within the general fund sales tax, which allowed us to then use those operations.
Let's put it in English numbers. You had a million and a half dollars, I'm rounding, a million and a half dollars that we were using, sales tax. we were using, sales tax proceeds to pay on existing debt. What we said was, we're going to now, we're now going to use secondary property tax collections proceeds to pay that debt, which means that million and a half dollars now is, is not, out of sales tax proceeds is not being used. Therefore, we can use it for whatever, literally, but what we decided was we needed that because we have these new fire stations. The cost to man operate that was about a million and a half dollars, and so therefore that's basically how we paid for the operations for those fire stations.
That's correct, Mayor. We reallocated the sales tax previously dedicated to debt service over to the operational side to fund the operations of those fire stations.
Okay, so I wasn't going to do this argument, but I'll give it to you, since the shot's been fired. Here's what it is. 2002 to 2007, a prior council took on $100 million of debt. And that prior council had every opportunity to institute a secondary property tax. In fact, as a newly elected leader, but not sworn in yet, I sat up here and I called them out on it, and I said, hey, you've had all these years to manage this system and do it. You need to fix the system now before you leave. You're all term limited. They decided not to. But we, as this new council, went in and said, hey, we're going to fix this system because it's broken. It's been known to be broken for a long time. So the slippery slope argument, so the way it was presented to the council is, hey, we have this terrible deficit of emergency response in the southeast Mesa. We need to figure out a way to get that coverage. We can build the fire stations with bond issues and that, but how do we staff them? Yes, there was a reasonable decision to go that route. This decision, the way I see it, is now a new policy direction in my mind, that we're going to go and say, that old $100 million of debt, we're now going to, by the way, it's about a $92 million bill in interest when you figure in the whole thing, right?
Correct.
So now we're talking about $192 million. But now we're caught into this, and this will be used on us and future councils, is if we want a new revenue source, we want to go through the property tax, even though it was allowed and it was voted on. I'm saying we don't have to go down that road. We maybe need to, you know, Councilmember Richens says, save some of, some of our gunpowder for some upcoming, you know, issues. That's actually a pretty reasonable way to look at it. But I would say you probably ought to save the option on the property tax side because we may have some big headwinds, we don't know what's going to happen. But now you kind of, it feels like, hey, we already did it, so we have to go, we have done this policy. But in my mind, this, this is a major shift in policy. People try to make this out to be a, a decision about $10 a year. This is a big decision about $100 million of debt and $92 million of interest payments. And I'm just saying, I don't think we need to go down that road yet. I think there's an alternative. We are looking at our quasi-private, our primary property tax, and that is in the water rates. And I, I think it's a more reasonable way to go. It's just a different way. But don't ever, please don't, you know, how can I say, please don't ever try to say, well, we did it in the past, so you have to do it now. Because I don't think it's very reasonable, and I think it's a major shift, so.
Councilman Richens?
So if you're promoting a, a policy shift in that, I see where, I see where you're coming from.
I'm not promoting that policy shift.
Well, no, you said that we're, we should take a new policy direction.
No.
I'm sorry.
I'm saying, don't go this new policy. This is a new, what I would consider.
We did this in 2008 and 10.
There you go. You're trying to, but we, I think we did it for different reasons, and it was more of an approach of just an isolated, let's staff and cover. But don't use that against me, I would say kindly to other folks. Don't try to say, hey, we got you once, now we're going to keep getting you all the way down the road. Because it is a, it is a tax increase. As much as somebody will try to, anybody try to reframe this, this is a new way to do things for an old problem done by people that weren't us. And I've had the criticism come to me, hey, you're just sticking your head in the sand, you're shifting your position. Absolutely not. I tried in every way possible and paid the political price for trying to call out the folks that did the $100 million of debt between 2002 and 2007. We're yet again asking to fix an old problem that I don't think this council should have to deal with. I think there's an easier way to do it.
So, so let me get this straight. You want to call out a previous council for their fiscal policy, but you're not willing to fix it now with the same fiscal policy you called them out on?
You're wrong. I absolutely supported. We fixed this problem in 2008. We took the, the political courage and fixed it. No one can ever accuse me of not making tough political decisions.
But, but it seems like your repair is going back to the fiscal policy of the old council of adjusting utility rates up and down to try to cover issues.
No, absolutely not.
So I, you can't, I mean, you, you want it kind of both ways, Alex, and I don't understand.
I absolutely want it both ways.
I just, I just don't get it.
No, there, there's no discrepancy.
You absolutely want it both ways?
Well, I, I want it to be the right way. What I, what the, is the issue I'm promoting. Let me tell you, Mayor, you know, all of us know, we've made tough, five years of really tough decisions on how to handle these debt problems, how to restructure it. We made the decision to take it to the voters right off the bat, and we've won their confidences. You know, I, I just think it's a sneaky way to try and go, hey, you did it once, so now you have to do it in the future. Sneaky way.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to do this anymore. I think, I think having an open discussion is not a, is not a sneaky way. This is like the third time we've talked about it.
Well, you keep saying, well, you did it once, you have to do it again.
Well, no, we, we took this exact approach with firefighters. Why are our parks any less of value?
It's not about a park. This is about old debt. This is about $100 million of debt.
We have to free up operating costs.
Long before we ever occupied this office. The new council has done everything to fix this.
The voters approved those bonds, and they approved any, any funding source to pay for them.
Well, you know, if you're so confident about it, let's take it to the voters and have a reaffirmation of this thing. Yeah, you, you give that look, let's see if it really goes.
Wait, wait, I've put three bond issues on the ballot since I've been on council, and I've written letters of support for every one of those bond issues. How many of you written letters of support for, Alex?
None. I don't write letters of support.
There you go.
Yeah, so you're, you're trying to say you're courageous in this approach. We were all courageous.
Now, we're going to get back to the issue. And, you know, I, I'm sort of torn by this because, Alex, I will say one thing. If we want to talk about policies, this is a Hobson's choice. Because either way you do this, you're going to, you're going to establish a policy. I think, and, and once again, I look at it in totality, and here's, here's where I'm driven by this. I asked staff to pull out the tax revenues that have been collected by the city of Mesa in the last seven to eight years. And let me throw out a few numbers here. 2005, 2006, this city collected $157 million in sales taxes. Last year, this current year, we will collect $143 million total. That includes sales taxes of $129 million. We are collecting, if I do my math right, that is 27, $28 million less in sales tax revenue this year than we did five, six years ago, seven years ago. At its low point in 2010 and 2011, we collected $121,600,000 in sales tax. That's a 37,000, $37 million decrease in sales tax revenue. The sales tax revenue is what is used to fund primarily our general fund. I think this council, I, I'm not going to apologize to anybody for how we have managed our fiscal issues. We have taken a huge, huge hit. Oh, and all that time, by the way, the transfer or the reliance upon enterprise, water rates stay the same. So we did not look to any, any help. We did not, we, we resisted the temptation of going to the water rates to do anything. And we made do with that. We made it work. One of the policies that I will laud the previous council for, which this council has, and I share the same thing with, as you do, Alex, that I think that long ago, this, this city should have weaned itself from, from sales tax financing of fixed debt amounts. And I think that the arguments that were used by our predecessors and others are, were lame arguments. I think fiscal, fiscal sanity said, you don't pay fixed debt amounts with fluctuating revenue streams. That's just, that's dumb. That's, that's stupid. I'm not going to question why they made the decision or didn't, because guess what? They made those decisions. I'm not them. And we're, we're faced with our reality, which is very different than what they were faced with. When you're looking at, when you're looking at nearly $30 million in less revenue, and by the way, even if we were to change in this, and I would beg to differ on whether this is a tax increase, because the total tax load for the citizens of Mesa, sales tax and secondary property tax is less today and will be less regardless of what we do here than it was six years ago. Our citizens are paying less in taxes to the city of Mesa than they did six years ago. And yet, I believe that the quality of our service has not been marginalized. I think it's still a stellar. There's no doubt we're, we're, have a few areas where we're living on chewing gum and baling wire, but on the other hand, we, we've done well. So, you know, I'm not going to apologize for that, but it seems to me like we're, and this is where I'm, I don't have an answer for this, I'm struggling because you're trading one policy for the other. On one, it's previous councils decided not to pay for debt out of the secondary property tax, and therefore we're somehow stuck with that. We should be stuck with that. On the other hand, the previous council also decided we would not use water rates to plug budgetals. Well, if we, if we shift it all to the water rates, isn't that what we're doing? I mean, that's the question I'm, I'm struggling with. Because it seems like if we focus on what the previous council did, then we lose sight on what is right today. I don't like to increase taxes or increase water weights, water rates at all. I wish that we could decrease them every year. You know, if I decrease taxes and decrease water, water rates every year, guess what? I'm pretty popular when I go out to, to rotary clubs and, and, and all these, these things. But I have no control over gas that are, we put in our police cars. I have no control over, over pension costs. Wish we did, we don't, okay? Have no, no control over many of the costs we incur to provide basic services. And yet, as I said, we're dealing with significantly lower resources. And so I'm very much open to the idea that we once again follow, which I do believe, and I stated this last time, I, I agree with you, there was not a formal policy that said from now on, we will do this. But going from your statements prior to election, which I, which I applauded you on, I think they were bold statements, that this is a system that is broken, meaning the unwillingness to consider, for political reasons, the, the shifting of the burden from a, from a non-secure, a volatile sales tax base, and I just showed the numbers to show how volatile it is, to a solid base. And I have no problem with secondary property tax because we use those bonds to build things that benefit property. There's a direct connection. And I think that those who benefit from a, an investment, I have no problem asking them to bear the burden of paying for those benefits. And that's why I think secondary property tax is there. But this council very, very explicitly said that they were willing to explore and actually implemented the idea that we would shift burden to the secondary property tax to pay for operations. We put that into place. Now, whether we adopted that as a formal policy or not, you know, we could, I don't ever remember there being a resolution, but we've done that not once, but we've done it twice. I don't think, and I don't think that that should be looked at as all the gates are wide open, because I think the fact that we're having this discussion means we're taking that very seriously. We recognize that this is not open season. But on the other hand, I appreciate the fact that we look at things not in a snapshot, but as a, on a five-year rolling basis, and we look and see how this impact has, and you cannot deny the fact that we are in a much, this city is in a much different fiscal situation than it was five years ago. And I'm not sure that the sales tax, I, my guess is the cell tax will never return to the healthy way that it was six, seven years ago. I don't know, I just haven't seen it. And I can't rely on the fact that it's going, so I'm torn. Because on one hand, I, I don't like the idea of shifting, but on the other hand, I look at the numbers and look at the reality. And so, I don't know. Yeah, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
And I appreciate what you're saying, actually. You're looking at this, this snapshot is, we are still, haven't come out of this recession. So when I suggested it might be a property tax, it's definitely a tax increase. If somebody says, hey, we'll, we'll cap our sales tax, or we'll limit the amount, then I think it's the argument that I hear is, hey, we're looking for a more stable revenue source, and I get that. But nobody suggested that. This is in addition to, and, but you know, you know, this tension, and I apologize for that, is, the irony is, there's been so many good things, so many courageous decisions made, and there may not have been a letter, but I voted unanimously like everybody else did to take that out there, and, and it took a lot of courage, political courage, I would say. And we, we've all done this. What I think we don't get credit for from a council position, you know, I would respectfully jab, you know, with a tongue in cheek to our city manager, I never saw him roll this proposal out to the prior council, but he's rolled it out to us. You know, roll out a budget and say, hey, by the way, I want you to do a secondary property and, you know, that never happened because it just, there wasn't the support, but.
I'm sure if that would have been offered to Mr. Brady, I have no doubts that he would have accepted it gladly.
Well, what I'm saying is, he didn't roll, this is his budget. This is his budget.
But it was a different world.
He rolled this out. It was, no, that's the point I'm making, is I think people have looked at us and said, hey, you guys are willing to make courageous decisions and go down some roads, and I get that completely. But the thing that we don't get credit for, minimum gallonage rates, doing away with furloughs. I, I could run through lists of tough decisions we've been asked to do to kind of address all of this. So my, there is no criticism at all for this council. I would just say, when you look at, I, I've even made some suggestions on how I think we could make some very not painful cuts in the, for now, and then just kind of wait and see if we have the recovery come through. And so we're having a focus on revenue, but actually I think there's some areas we could save some money on, but I didn't even try and throw that out there to, you know, not muddy up the water. But anyway.
But I will say one thing, when you talk about political price, as I recall, we all ran unopposed.
I know.
You know, I, I think, I, I think that I give our citizens more credit, and I'm very, very mindful as to respecting the trust that the citizens of Mesa have given this council. I never, ever take that for granted. I recognize that, you know, all you have to do is do one thing that violates that trust and you lose it, and then that's how it should be. But on the other hand, I look at the, the elections we've had in this city, and I, I think that the citizens have shown what they think about this city and this council, with the fact that, you know, from our first bond issue through the elections, through every bond issue that has passed overwhelmingly, even, you know, the parks, which, everything said that that should not have passed. And as a matter of fact, the cities around us overwhelmingly defeated issues brought before them, and our citizens stepped up. And, you know, I don't think that was a minor thing they did. And I, I think that what they said was, we want quality of life. We expect the city to do what they can to support quality of life. And on that being, I would, I would agree with Councilman Richens that I think it is important to them. And I think there will be a greater price to pay if that's what we're worried about. And, you know, if I start worrying about things like that, just shoot me or get me out of here. Because I, I hope I never get that way. And believe me, I have a lot of people who are assuming I'm going to do something else who say, oh, you can't do this because it'll hurt you and that. I, you know, if I get to that point, please, get rid of me. So, because that's just not the way I ever want to, I'll ever want to do things. But, no, it's a tough decision, but I don't know that it's an, I don't know that you ease the pain either way, and I think that's the problem. Because on one hand, in my mind, you are, you are expanding that policy, which we've done before. I don't think we've said we, we're not going to do it. But on the other hand, I, I really struggle with the fact that we are violating something which I believe is even more substantive in our financial discipline, and that is that we don't go to the utilities to solve general fund issues. And we did that through the deepest of recession. We, we maintained that discipline. We agreed to increase it, not because, and I, regardless of what the headlines say, it was time to increase that. When you go six years, five, six, seven years with no increase, we probably should have had a, you know, at least a steady increase so we could have kept time, you're actually decreasing the transfer in real dollar terms. And I think to increase it is the wise thing to do. I support it wholeheartedly. To increase it further, just so we don't have to increase that other, I'm a little, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with that. I don't know exactly where I am, but to me, okay, it's six, one half does in the other. I don't know exactly where I am, but to me, okay, it's six, one half does the other. So, Councilman Summers, I think you had a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you pretty much covered my thoughts on this, and, and the numbers that you used to illustrate your point were, were enlightening, for sure. To think about the, how the city has been impacted by this recession, the fact that we have reduced the number of employees to, to a number we haven't seen since at least the 80s, if not sooner, is that we have cut, this council has cut over $100 million out of the general fund. And yet, at the same time, we have to balance that with the increasing cost of commodities, increasing cost of running our services, and, I'm going to be uncharacteristic and defend Mr. Brady. I was a little joke. But, you know, Mr. Brady came on just ahead of me when I was elected in 2006, and I think the first thing out of the chute for him was dealing with the previous council wanted to look at changing the way that this city fundamentally financed itself and put forward the, the ballot proposition for a primary property tax. Now, in retrospect, I think putting that in a general fund is a broad way, it was a mistake, that perhaps if they had, the previous council had fixed that to maybe public safety issues, and then financed the rest of the city off of the existing revenue, maybe it would be different. I don't know. It's money, you know, it's armchair quarterbacking. But the city has, the voters have said that they are interested in public safety, that they're interested in the quality of life, and they've made those, made those decisions, and we need to fund those and support those the best we can. Also, and I know technically this is a, you can say that this is a city manager's budget, but I disagree. This is all our budget. My fingerprints are all over this thing, too. I see things in this that I've had, in this budget, that I've had conversations with city manager and staff, and, and I know that Dave and Dennis have things in here, I know all of us have put our fingerprint on this. This is our budget, it's not Chris's budget. So, you know, if there, if there are things in there that we decide in retrospect we don't want, pull them out, but I have to tell you, I think this budget reflects what the voters have told us repeatedly, is, in the, in the decisions that they have made. I think it reflects the direction that this council wants to have, certainly much of it reflects what I've asked for in this budget, and, and I think the, the steps that we are taking here to finance that are smart decisions. Maybe not always popular, but they're, they're the right thing to do, and I think that's what's important here. Thank you, Mayor.
In fact, not to put you on the thing, so which, where are you leaning as far as the shift on the secondary or the-
Yeah, neither one of them are going to be popular, so, but I'm-
You need a quarter?
I need a quarter. No, I'm going to make, I'm going to try to make an informed decision here, and I'm leaning to what my distinguished colleague here to my left has said. What's your name?
Physically or politically?
Dave.
You didn't hear what I said?
Yes, I did, and I'm trying to get past it right now. But I, I think Dave, and he's, he's a, he has some connections to water and gas, and he does a lot of that work, and I think Councilwoman Higgins does a lot of work with the natural gas, too. So, hearing that alarm bell, I would, I would lean toward making the adjustments within the property tax rate.
Okay. Councilman Higgins, anything you want to add to this?
I would like to agree with my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Kavanaugh, and, and agree with him on that same point.
Okay. Councilman Glover, anyone to add?
I personally prefer the adjusting to the-
Good job.
Sorry. I'm not used to talking, so I forgot about the mic. Sorry.
Wait, wait, make, make sure the microphone hasn't, hasn't rusted. Does it still work?
Could you introduce it?
No, I personally prefer the adjusting the enterprise rate and the utility rates, but obviously, that's a losing battle, but I, it's something that I struggle with, too, but this is, I think, the better option from my own point of view and from my district.
Okay. Thank you. Now, as we move forward, I would assume, what's going to be on the, on the, on the ballot? What's going to be on the agenda is the max budget that's been, that's been approved?
Yeah, that really is just establishing the, the numbers, like you saw today in the capital.
Right.
Capital fund, and then we-
Well, and what was presented last week is fuzzy operating.
And you're just approving a limitation, not necessarily the-
And then on the 17th, we come back, and if there are any downward adjustments, because there can only be downward adjustments.
That's correct, Mayor.
If we approve the max budget on June 3rd, you can only go, you can only reduce that.
Equals you are less than-
Okay, and that will be the final budget, along with the rates. Do we, do we approve tax rates at that point in time, too? Or do we do that in July?
The property tax rates are on July 1st.
I know you get the schedule, but I, they don't have it right in front of you.
Rates are on the 17th.
Correct. The utility rates would be on June 17th. They're actually being introduced on Monday, but they can be adjusted between the introduction and the adoption. You'll be adopting the rates, they're scheduled for adoption on June 17th, and then the secondary property tax would be scheduled for adoption on July 1st.
Okay.
Now, the-
Our state attorney has a, has a fluxomed look on her.
I just wasn't sure, on an issue, Candace said that, once introduced, we can adjust the rates.
My understanding from staff is that we looked into, if we introduce, what we're introducing on Monday is the 2% in the water, wastewater and resident, and solid waste residential, and if the direction is that the council would prefer a 3%, then the 2%. My understanding was that we can modify the rate schedules attached to the ordinance between.
Oh, attached to the ordinance?
Correct.
Look at that, and let's look and see, because once we go to our final one, let's say there's a shift between that.
Right.
If on the 17th, we approve a final budget, is that the last day to approve that final utility rate? Or could we swing that? Seems like that could swing to July 1st also.
And it just, it would just result in a delayed implementation, is what it would be. So, your first year of collection would be-
So, you have like 30 days or whatever it is, or 20 days?
From the adoption of the ordinance. So, your, your first year of collection would be a different, reduced dollar amount.
Okay, but that would flow over-
Yeah.
Yes.
We could carry over, I mean, once again, you'd cross dates on the back end, too. You could, so-
We could figure it out.
You could plan the cash flow to make that work.
I think that really the hard deadline is going to be that July 1st deadline on the secondary property tax.
Okay. All right. And I think you've heard the majority on which way to go on property versus the other.
And your tentative budget sets your expenditure budget. It's your total dollar amount for your expenditure appropriations, and then, within that budget, we would show the revenue resources we are using, saying that we do achieve a balanced budget.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. Next item is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of the Museum and Cultural Advisory Board have a motion from Councilmember Kavanaugh, second from Councilmember Summers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Here are reports on meetings and conferences attended. Do you have any reports?
You can do the town hall.
Yeah, I'll do that. Had the, the privilege of attending a town hall with, let me see, Councilmember Summers, Councilmember Richens, Councilmember Glover, I think those-
That's awesome.
That was it, okay. With Congressman Salmon, I mean, it was, it was crazy. They had a room that they thought they were afraid was too big, and my goodness, it was, it was overwhelming. A lot of interest, a lot of great questions. We appreciate council, or council, we appreciate Congressman Salmon for including us, so we could cover city issues, and it was thanks to all, and those out at Sunland Springs to, for hosting that. It was, it was a great event. Councilman Summers?
Just to add to that, Mayor, and you'll attest to it, I thought it was, they did a fantastic job of running it, and the folks who showed up were across the spectrum, far left to, to, to far right, and while there was disagreement in that room, and you always, you see the horror stories on these town halls, there wasn't, they weren't disagreeable. It was a fantastic exchange and dialogue, and it bodes well for how well people in Mesa want to engage, are interested in their community, and how well the congressman did on managing that, that town hall. It was spectacular.
Councilman Glover?
No, I was just going to tell you, Mayor, you did an excellent job on how you handled all the questions, and even though you told people not to tell stories, sometimes they did, but at the same time-
I know. Same time- I love town halls. Ask your, ask your question, and they have a speech written. Finally, about the, there was one guy, we were near the end, and the audience started saying, what's your question? What's your question? The poor guy didn't know what to do, but he finally asked the question. No, it was, those are great. It's always good to be out there and, and have that kind of interaction. And people are passionate, but I agree with Councilmember Summers, it was great to see people disagree, but not be disagreeable. One other thing, I had the privilege of attending the graduation of the Mayor's Youth Committee last week. Great group of kids. You know, this is, every year, I'm, 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 never cease to be amazed at the quality of, of students we have in our schools. Once again, this year, we had representatives from every, every public school, include Mesa and Gilbert High School, and several charter schools. So, we had a good representation of, of youth in Mesa, and they worked hard throughout the year, and this, this is not just a social club, believe me. These kids work, they have projects, they give service. Kathy is at 30 hours of, 30 hours of service during the year on, on various service projects. Doesn't sound like much until you actually go out and start doing it. It's a lot of service, and we had several graduates, and, you know, kudos to my chief of staff, Kathy McDonald, who runs that program on behalf of me, and does a great job in, providing a meaningful, meaningful experience. She was helped by Melissa Rondasso and Misty Wells in our office, so that was, that was really good. And if you, if you're interested, and you're a high school student, talk to your guidance counselor first thing next year, over the summer, and get involved, because it's a great, it's a great activity. Anything else? Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, June 1st, from 11 to 5, there's going to be a Florida Pro-Am event at the Rhodes Aquatic Complex. I'm pretty excited to see professionals and amateurs come and compete in bodyboarding and floorboard events. Our next study session will be Monday.
I'd like to ask how many of the council are planning on participating in this? Am I the only one? Am I the only one?
I'll be there for pitchers.
And so, next council meeting will be Monday, June 3rd. Also, Mayor and council would like to announce that Carrie Canada, Deputy City Manager, will be away from us for the next three weeks. She has been accepted to be part of the senior executives in state and local government program at Harvard University.
Excuse me, it's Harvard.
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 So, she has a scholarship that is paying for the, the program, and so she'll be out for the next three weeks, so we wish her luck and-